And good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school district of the city of Dearborn. Today's meeting for April 14th. It's 7:05. Mr. Secretary, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee El Jami.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Dan Brogio.
Here.
Trustee Petlicov.
Here.
Vice President Watts.
Here.
Trustee Tsar, here. President Moszib.
Here, thank you. Next item, please.
Now, I'd like to introduce Ms. Merriam-Farhat. She's the principal of Henry Ford Elementary. To introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Superintendent Maleko, President Moszib, and board trustees. I'm very honored to invite these young ladies from our kindness club to join us in saying the pledge. They also would like to do our school kindness pledge, if that would be all right. And they do have something they'd like to say about their club after the pledge. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledged to myself on this very day to try to be kind in every way. To every person, big or small, I will help them if they fall. When I love myself and others do, that is the best the Henry Ford Bronco can do.
So, we were inspired by a few of our peers, colleagues, who already have kindness clubs in place. And we had two staff members, who the girls will talk about, take this on this year. And it's made a huge difference in our school. And the girls will tell you about it.
The Henry Ford Kindness Club is a fun group of kids who love to help others and spread kindness all around the school. We have about 44 members in our kindness club. Our awesome sponsors, Ms. Burks and Ms. Batty, help us come up with great ideas to make people smile.
This year, we raised money by selling our handmade jewelries like keychain necklaces and bracelets. We raised $470.45. We then donated the proceeds to help people in our community. The donation went to many different organizations, like Sabil Foundation, Amenity, and Zaman. We also did kind things, like writing nice notes to teachers during conferences. And we created an activity for our whole school to do for World Kindness Day back in November.
Which was the kindness chain, where everyone in this school writes a kind note on a piece of paper. And we connected it together to make a big chain. Another one of our ideas was to have students and staff write compliments to one another. Each day, we read several of the submitted compliments during our morning announcements. It really puts everyone in a good mood first thing in the morning. Thanks to the kindness club, our school feels happier and more friendly.
We have some special jewelry made by our kindness club, which we will give to you later.
Thank you.
So, we do have some kindness club bracelets that they made. And I will probably have to interschool mail them.
Thank you. But we do have something for you. So ladies, if you can come up, please.
I'd like to share a couple words on my own. I want to thank my principal and teachers for all their help. I also want to thank all the people who were there in my learning experience and in my succeeds. Lastly, I want to thank my mom and dad for always encouraging me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, can you tell us your names again?
Go to the mic and tell us your name.
My name is Weham Al Ghuzi.
What grade are you in?
I am in the fifth grade.
My name is Behir Veeh Vidya, and I'm also in fifth grade.
My name is Nasrin Aslamia, and I'm also in the fifth grade.
All right.
All right, great job. Thank you. This is for you. How do you say your first name again?
Behir Veeh.
Behir Veeh. Thank you. Nasrin, this is for you. Thank you so much.
Trustee Tsar will take a picture. You guys want to take a picture with them? I do.
I do. Nasrin is my cousin, too.
Starting a new tradition.
Yes? Thank you to the Henry Ford family again. Next item, please.
The next item is Superintendent Maleko's update.
So, I'd like to start. We're going to observe a moment of silence. And we're going to start. We had a former trustee, Stockwell, who passed away. And we have a couple, I believe, slides from Eric and the team. If we could also take another moment. We had a coach who passed away. And we want to take a moment of silence for that coach and their family as well along. Thank you. I'll just go down the agenda.
Sure.
President. So, we'll start with retirements. And it will be a long list. And part of the reason that we will get at this time of year is because it is right at the time where staff members would submit their retirement. And then there's an incentive. So it allows us for staffing if they do. It's not a huge incentive, but it's something that we give back. So this is usually the longest list is around this time of year. So we want to both thank our retirees and congratulate them on their retirement. So I'll start. Carolyn Allen, 26 years of service. Veronica Andrews, over 29 years of service. Paul Bearwald, 37 years of service. Zainab Berry, over 29 years of service. Jean Brackett, over 21 years of service. Ryan Cook, 29 years. Alina Donaldson, over 29 years. Jessie Duponts, 25 years. Kathleen Duquette, over 36 years of service. Deena Furlough, 28 years. Elizabeth Garcia, 30 years. John Hett, over three years. Keith Hobbins, over 24 years. Miriam Johair, nine years. Lisa Kennean, over 25 years of service. And I apologize if I didn't pronounce that correctly. Tried to get it correct here. Dean Kendall, 32 years. Rebecca Lodgson, 28 years. Wendy Gons, over 35 years. Rebecca Majetic, 28 years. Ashar Maktari, 30 years of service. Heidi Martin, 34 years. Jenny Mori, 39 years. Mary Passan, over 25 years. Celeste Reed, 29 years. Colleen Schum, 30 years. Wendy Shane, 30 years. Mark Shepard, over five years. Janet Smith, 28 years. Peter Sunay, 25 years. Frederick Seisel, over 17 years. Anne Marie Walters, 30 years. Linda Well, over 35 years. Christine Wilkie, 30 years. Carrie Zach, 25 years. There's many, many years of service, supporting many students over the years. So I know a lot of them personally. And I've met most of them. And appreciate the great work they've done.
I just have to say that a number of those names are familiar to me because they were part of the Oakman family. And they taught my children. And it's scary that they're retiring. And my kids are closing in on 40 now, too. So it's a well-deserved group leaving us.
Definitely. That combined years of service maybe exceeds 1,000 years. So thanks to all of them for their service.
Next, I have Mr. Mustin, who's going to come up and speak about the board proclamation from several years ago about Arab American Heritage Month.
Good evening, board. And Detective Maleko, President Moszib. So April is National Arab American Heritage Month. And the Dearborn Public Schools is very proud to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of Arab Americans who have made to our community, our state, and our country. The district passed an official resolution in June of 2018 proclaiming April of each year to be National Arab American Heritage Month here in the district. The resolution encourages all residents to join in this special observation. Just as millions of other people from countries around the world have immigrated to the United States to pursue a better life and contribute to the success of our nation, so too have Arab Americans. For more than two centuries, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society in medicine, law, business, technology, government, and culture. Men and women of Arab descent have become woven into the American tapestry as they share their rich culture and traditions. And we are very proud that this Board of Education took that initiative, passed this resolution in 2018. And it is ongoing within our district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Next item, please. We're still on.
Yeah, I'm still going to go down. So a couple, I have a few more things here. Just want to recognize our staff for Occupational Therapy Month, all our therapists. It's also Autism Awareness Month. I know we've been invited to some different autism events. And it's also School Library Month. So I want to thank our media specialists and librarians. I'm going to keep going down with some more positive. Dearborn shines on a national level, a lot, and a state level. We were at the, Ms. Harris and I, we're at the NSBA conference about a week ago. We presented on Board Superintendent Communication Relations and handling board meetings. I presented this topic at the National Superintendent Meeting. I know trustee Petlicov was going to join us, but wasn't able to. So we had, and we worked it out. Trustee Watts came in virtually. Went very well. Our session was jam-packed. In fact, they needed more seating, I think, in the area. We had a minor technical issue because of the Zoom, but we worked through it. And it was very important. I think that it also showed how we use technology and how the board and superintendent work together. And we had about 75% in the room, I think, were school board members and about 25% superintendents in the group. So I want to thank the board for supporting these. And obviously, they're great conferences. We did submit to the MASB State Conference for the same topic as well. So encourage everyone to go to those. And I know a lot of you have been to the different conferences. So thank you, Vice President Watts and Joanne Harris. And by the way, she gave, Joanne, she's great with the technology. So this was the way. She had one of these, the card for the QR. So it made it very easy for participants just to scan it and get the presentation, like on their phone or their computer, right when we were there in the session. So, okay, I'll keep moving along. I want to mention federal grant uncertainty. All districts right now are not certain of certain grants, especially from the federal government. The Trump must cuts have started. We had one called the HRA, which we sent that to the board. We're going, you know, it had to do with mental health and supports for students. Supports some of our social workers and things of that nature. Next year, that would cost us about $1.1 million. So these things have started. You know, we're just not certain. We're going to continue to advocate for the funding for, you know, for our students. I was interviewed by Detroit News, too. You know, we do get between our consolidated application of title funding and special ed, we're at about $25 million. So there's been some discussion that those may be reduced. We're not sure. The state is going to potentially come up with a one-year solution on a rainy day fund, but we don't know that for sure as well. So obviously, these are very concerning. We're hearing other things, like the free lunch program and things of that nature. But we're not 100%. So when I'm saying these things, there's a lot of uncertainty right now with what's going on. So I just have to mention this as we balance our budget and look at these items that we may have to take care of, you know, these cuts from these federal areas that we've relied on for so many years. With that, I want to mention that we do have a potential resolution for the board next month. And this is about IDEA special ed funding. A lot of the national groups have asked, including, I believe, the School Board Association and the superintendents, that it's fully funded. Right now, it is not fully funded. The special ed is not fully funded by the federal government. So it is currently a partially funded mandate. If they were to cut the federal funding, what I've explained to Detroit News is that it would actually hurt all, so it'd hurt special ed students. But there's certain services that we would have to absorb in the general fund because you have to implement it by the IDEA law. So you would actually be going into your general fund. So all students would be impacted by a potential special ed. Our association, I'm on the governing board at the National Superintendent Group. And I know you're aware about last month, I was at the meetings. We meet virtually as well. And I will have some meetings in Washington this summer with that group. And they're advocating for more fully funding. We know it may not be the right time, but these are the things that are going on. So we continue to monitor. And we're thankful we have Mr. Wall here, who we're going to be going through those budget processes. And tonight, he's going to be talking about that. So that's another thing, just to be on the lookout. I will tell you, I've met with Congress, our congresspeople from our senators, staff people, that I've been advocating, including our state officials. But our federal officials right now are people that we really need support because we're just worried about some of these cuts that might impact students. Moving right along, I wanted to congratulate President Moszib, Award of Merit Level 3 for MASB. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I know we have an award ceremony coming up at South Redford, I believe, in a week or so. And former trustee Thorpe also received Level 4 Master Board. I did get a letter from the executive director, Don Wartruber, to both of them. So congratulations to both of them. Oh, and that award ceremony is the 24th at 5:30 at Redford Union Secondary Campus. I got to do another kudos here. Mike Assaly and his team were talking about special ed. We were invited a few months ago. And this had to do with the special ed audit, least restrictive environment in our co-teaching. The state came in to audit school districts, not just us. They saw some remarkable things that were going on. Again, we know that we can always improve. So we're not saying we're perfect. But the state came in. They then asked us to present at the state Board of Education meeting. They had Mr. Assaly there. We had a student, Hattie, who presented. And they were really heralding both Wayne County, along with the director from special ed for the state of Michigan, as Dearborn Schools is a model for special ed implementation. He's now been contacted, and they want him at other conferences. And I believe CBS Local News is also going to do a story on this. So this is a positive thank you. And kudos to Mike. But I will say, Hattie sold the show, one of our students in the program, and talked about how teachers in the model really had a positive impact on him. And we learned that he actually wrote a book, the student. So it's remarkable. And he really talked about how he needed those students to get through some of his areas of disability that he was dealing with. And his father was so proud, he taped the whole thing. It was fantastic. So I was glad to, I wasn't part of the presentation. I just went up there to support the presentation.
Was the presentation taped on video?
Yes, it would be on the state. It is, because it's on the School Board Association. They have a whole day of meetings. And it would have been last Tuesday. Can you link it, Mike?
Please, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The last thing that I just have, which we have on every agenda, Tom Wall is going to talk about this morning, his budget. I know we have Kathy Martin coming up about, you know, building areas as well. We have a potential bond that we're still working towards. The Quinn Evans group, I know, has met with a lot of people. And they're going to be setting, they wanted to get all this data together and then set up a meeting with me. So that's going to be coming up soon. So more to come on that as well. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Any questions for the superintendent? If there are no questions, we can go to the next item, please.
Sure. The next section is recognition and acknowledgements. And we're moving on to commendations.
At Dearborn High School and Dearborn Science, Math, Dearborn Center of Math, Science, and Technology. First, I'd like to start with the district commendations. Commendations to Nikki Cassidy and Sunshine Durant, who have been named recipients of the Dearborn Mayor's Arts Awards. Ms. Cassidy is the art teacher at Dearborn High and will receive the Arts Educator Award. Ms. Durant teaches at River Oaks and is a district's art resource teacher. She is receiving special recognition. The Mayor's Arts Awards will be presented on April 28. Now for the high school commendations. Commendations to the Dearborn High Girls' varsity basketball team, who claimed the MHSAA District Championship in March. The head coach is Mahdi Hamadi. And assistant coach is Kel Al Samhuri. Commendations to Fortin High School, which was recognized as a Michigan College Access Network champion. More than 80% of Fortin seniors applied to at least one college in October. Fortin was one of 59 high schools across the state to be recognized. Commendations to Atso Ford High School's DAKA Club members, Devon Mitchell and Jason Bundas. Both qualified for and competed in the 2025 DAKA State Conference in automotive service marketing. Commendations to Dearborn High student Mahdi Sabah and Atso Ford student Macy Gurlik. Both seniors were named 2024 to 2025 Van Patrick Award winners as top student athletes in the city. Awards are based on athletic and academic achievement as well as extracurricular activities and community involvement. Gurlik earned an outstanding 15 varsity letters at excellent volleyball, basketball, soccer, and track. She exceeded the usual maximum 12 varsity letters by competing in two spring sports. Mahdi competed in football, wrestling, and track. Commendations to all of the students featured in the Dearborn Public School Citywide Art Show, which opened on April 1st at the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center. A special recognition for the senior artists selected to display multiple items. Those students include Nasrin Huseni from Virtual K-12, Amina Bazie and Maria Al Shawal from the Berry Career Center, Naveen Haydar from Dearborn High, Amani Mukbel and Mia Morabeiro from Atso Ford High, and Katie Heatherington and Sunen Al Jawad from Fortin High. Commendations to 15 students from the Michael Berry Career Center who qualified to compete at the state DAKA competitive in March. Theodore Mara and Mahmoud Fawani both medaled in their respective event. And three other students qualified to continue to the international competition in Orlando. Zainab Ahmed advanced in the Gold Mayor Award Program. And Maya Harmon and Jenna Habal qualified for their startup business plan. Commendations to the 29 students from the Michael Berry Career Center who qualified to compete at the state BPA competition in March. 12 students qualified to continue the national competition in Orlando, Florida. Di Al Matari and Ilya Salih both won multiple state competitions. Yar Ibrahim Ayah Sahoba and Ruwa Harb placed for their website design. Noor Habhab and Zainab Bazie, Yaro Yassin, and Madison Daibol placed for their podcast production. Ala Elzi not only placed in a state competition, but was also elected to Michigan BPA as a historian. Commendations to the Dearborn United Figure Skating Team, which was recently named state champions. This is the highest ever finish for Dearborn Unified. The team also finished second in Michigan in overall team point standings for individual events. Individual skaters who made it to the podium during the competitions. From Atso Ford High, Olivia Macleod was runner-up in gold ice stands. And Molly Holland took third place in showcase. Dearborn High student Jillian Furlough was the state champion in freestyle and runner-up in showcase. And DHA student Adriana Badun was state champion in showcase. The team is coached by Jason Darwish. Commendations to Henry Ford early college students in the National Honor Society and Student Council. The student came together to raise more than $350 for an O.L. Smith student who's battling cancer.
Hello, I'm Ann Butker. I'm also a student at Dearborn, or at the Dearborn Center for Math, Science, and Technology. The commendations for middle school are commendations to district middle school athletes who are also recognized at the recent Dearborn Department of Parks and Recreation Commission event. Those students include Leila Hamadeh and Mohammed Chamut from Bryant, Hadil Al Musa, Hadir Al Jabnabi from Lori, Hasna Musad and Ilyas Munasar from Salina, Akira Gambrell and James Maloch from Smith, Lathan Ackers and Saif Hamud from South, Zainab Bilaut and Jawad Bazie from Eunice, Halina Kreis and Haitham Al-Habbasi from Woodworth. Commendations to O.L. Smith teacher James Ravcliff, who also earned his PhD. Elementary commendations. Commendations to William Ford Elementary staff, including Miriam Obobachi, Peggy Honer, David Higgins, Nasrin Najm, and Annie Shout, who were accepted to present at the Michigan Reading Association Conference. As is always the case, our staff shined with the work they do to support our students. Commendations to district instructional coaches, Lisa Jorgensen and Michelle Linderman. The women facilitated six days of intensive professional development dedicated to the science of reading and the components of effective literary instruction. Through their skillful facilitation, they have built the capacity of elementary classroom teachers and positively impacted Tier 1 and 2 classroom instruction. Commendation to the Young Fives teachers and administration straters at Salina, Gear Park, Maples, McCullough Eunice, Lindberg, and Henry Ford for helping create the district video titled "Why Choose Young Fives?" Thank you to the parents and staff who participated. Jennifer Rustlink, Candy Kay Miroff, Beth Stepanovich, Sue Stanley, Lisa Fritzl, Lindsay Tilly, Wade Alawi, Angie Isham, and Carrie Kushner. A special thank you to the digital media supervisor, Eric Shigfree, and digital media technician Jacob Farah for all their efforts to create the final video. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barry?
Yes, I just want to follow up on the citywide art show. There was 75 students that put in their artwork for a T-shirt for the show. And the one who was selected was Myrna Abdullah from the Michael Berry Career Center. And I promised her that I was going to wear her shirt at the next board meeting. David, promise made, the promise kept, so I need proof.
There you go.
We'll share that with Myrna. Thank you. Thank you, President Moszib.
Thank you, trustee Barry. Next item, please.
Next item is employee recognition. Right? Yes?
Yes.
Good evening. There we go. I'll introduce you.
I'm so glad I came.
Yes, I'm so glad you came. So I'm going to read, this is Nicole Bush. Nicole is a teacher at Henry Ford Elementary. I'm going to hand the mic over to her in just a second. I'm so glad you made it today. Nicole is the only one out of the three that was able to join us. But one of them will hopefully join us next month. Nicole has been an instructional coach at Henry Ford Elementary. She's got 28 years with Dearborn Public Schools. And she was nominated for caring about all the students and the quality of education they are receiving. Nicole uses her expertise and skill to help everyone she works with grow and improve.
I didn't know I had to say anything. Thank you very much for nominating me. And it was quite an honor. And it was nice when they came to the school and the kids were super excited. So it was super nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And this is still one of my children's teachers. She's still not retired.
Good old Oakmen.
And that's, Mary, where I subbed in her class, one of my first assignments, that your daughter was in the class.
Yep, that is correct.
She's outstanding. I was so excited to go and deliver that when we met her at Henry Ford.
For Nicole, yeah. Our non-instructional employee is John Disney. I don't believe John is here. I don't see him. Yeah, he's not here. So, non-instructional employee is John Disney. John Disney is a custodian at McCullough Eunice. He also has 28 years with Dearborn Schools. And he was nominated for having high standards for how the building and ground should be used. And he was nominated for having high standards for how the building and ground should be treated and working diligently to keep them in great shape. Thank you, John Disney, and hopefully you'll see this message. Our administrator of the month is Nicole Raybakasaly. Nicole is the principal at Woodworth Middle School. She has 16 years with Dearborn Schools. She's nominated for her outstanding leadership and unwavering dedication. Her genuine care for every student and staff member creates a positive and supportive community at Woodworth. Nicole may be able to join us next month instead. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Alie Dzalzy. Next item, please.
Next item is acknowledgement of donations.
President Mosip, trustees, Dr. Maleko, Ms. Harris. The following donations have been offered to the school district. Acceptance of these donations are requested at this time. A donation of $500 has been offered to Whitmore Bowles Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for green space outdoor classroom. A donation of $1,876.72 has been offered to River Oaks Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation through crowdfunding to be used for the outdoor garden. A donation of $7,500 has been offered to Smith Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation through crowdfunding to be used for a fellow student who has cancer. A donation of a wagon has been offered to Miller Elementary School by Wayel Shemut to be used for transport robotic access, to be used to transport robotic accessories, sorry. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Hague Elementary School by Barhat for Michigan PAC to be used towards the third graders' field trip to Lansing, the Capitol Building and the Michigan Historical Museum. A donation of $2,338.75 has been offered to Fortin High School by the Fortin Alumni Association to be used for resources for staff, technology and the PE department. A donation of $250 has been offered to Henry Ford Elementary School by Mary Lou Zengerly to be used for a whiteboard. A donation of $10,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Jack Demmer Ford to be used to directly support student learning through in-person experiences, the purchase of educational equipment or specialized classroom materials not covered by the general fund. A grant of $21,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by No Kid Hungry Organization to be used to purchase a Comey oven that has multiple functions. It can steam, grill, bake and smoke. That will be used to offer a variety of items for students at breakfast and lunch. A donation of 140 Ford Remote Control Cars has been offered to Duval Elementary School by Event Network to be used as prizes for the ice cream social rewards for students and shares some with other elementary schools. And lastly, a donation of $300 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by CRSD Obad Maori to be used for PBIS student incentives and awards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We thank the Ed Foundation, as well as other donors who have contributed to our schools. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of minutes. Excuse me. We're looking for approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. The Building and Site Committee meeting on March 10th, 2025, Board Report 24-112. The regular P-12 meeting on March 10th, 2025, Board Report 24-113. And the executive session on March 17th, 2025, Board Report 24-144. I'm looking for anybody to make any necessary corrections and move further approval of these minutes.
Support.
Motion moved by Trustee Petishkov, supported by Trustee Barry. Any corrections to these minutes? We want the record to reflect. There are none. May I attach your unanimous roll, please? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next, we have union leadership commentary. Do you need me to read this whole paragraph?
Please, yeah.
Okay. The new section of the Board of Education, this new section of the Board of Education meeting is being added to further enhance the already strong commitment and longtime partnership between district administration and all bargaining units. Both instructional and non-instructional union members serve on a wide variety of standing and ad hoc committees that drive the work and decision-making in the Dearborn Public Schools. In addition, administration meets monthly with the leadership team of all unions, as well as a group meeting with union presidents. These meetings are not required, but are an extension of the collaborative partnership that has long existed in the Dearborn Public Schools. This new section will further enhance the commitment to valuing all suggestions, views and opinions brought forth by all staff members in the district. And I see we have with us today representative from the Dearborn Federation of Teachers, Ms. Kathy Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Spring is springing, so I'm really excited about that. So I am here to talk about building conditions. However, after a discussion today with the Engineers Union and the DFSE, I've decided to hold off on the slideshow as some issues may be currently being addressed. So I know that some of you have accessed what I sent over for today's meeting. And when we created this presentation, I tried to make sure that all the steps have been followed by people. I made sure that the administrators of the buildings were aware. I made sure that the engineers of the buildings were aware and that these issues are more than, you know, one or two months old. However, as a show of good faith, I am going to hold off and see what happens between now and the next school board meeting. And to be completely honest with you, I don't want to be here. I don't want to be making slideshows of, you know, damage to buildings. I want everything to be great and I want to skip along happily teaching our kids and having great welcoming schools. So if we can avoid getting to something like this, where I have to come to a school board meeting and show pictures, I would love that because I have better things to do. And members have better things to do than to take pictures and document and fill out forms. So I'm hoping this is a step in the right direction and we're going to resolve some of these issues. I understand that nobody is intentionally being negligible. I understand that this is a very large district and everything costs money. However, these buildings are where our children sit for eight hours a day. And we need to make sure that the environment and the climate is conducive to our children learning. And that's what I'm here talking about. So I'm going to leave that alone. I'm not going to go through the slideshow. But I would like to say that I feel that all of us have one thing, one common goal. And I've discussed this with Dr. Maleko multiple times. I feel like we have an understanding of where we want to be and I feel like we agree on a lot of things. And Dr. Maleko has been very supportive and easy to work with. And so I really do appreciate that. I appreciate that I can give you a call and things get resolved. We're making good progress. However, some stuff needs to move a little faster for the sake of our kids. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. We truly appreciate your comments. I know teachers personally have reached out to me as far as building conditions, which I forwarded those issues to the administration to look at. And they've been addressed. But I do want to say that we do have older buildings. Majority of our buildings are surpassing 100 years and they're falling apart. And this is where the entire community needs to pay attention right now and to say, we need to find permanent solutions. We can't just put on Band-Aids. I'll have the administration address things that they've been working on. I know operations department have been working on those. But please share those slideshows with administration so we can get those addressed ASAP. So I'll have Dr. Maleko and then we'll have trustee.
Yeah, so.
Just to comment on your comment. The majority of our buildings aren't 100 years old. I think there's 10 maybe out of the 30 plus.
Did I say majority?
Yeah, you said majority. I just want to make sure people are aware. Some of these issues occur in newer buildings, quite frankly. So the building, building issues occur across the spectrum.
Trustee Barry?
Yes, President Martin, very classy of you to step back a little bit tonight. But yes, some of these, these are unacceptable. Some of them I'm aware of, they've been going on for years and years and we're having the same discussion. So I'm very happy and excited and I'm hopeful that some of these things are taken care of. I mean, I don't want to say some simple things here, but there are some simple things here that we should get to right away, so.
I agree.
Thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
Trustee El Jazmi?
So in follow-up to previous discussions, how are, oh, sorry. In follow-up to previous discussion, how are we capturing these issues? Because one other thing that we want to make sure we're aware of all the issues that are happening. We shouldn't wait for you to put a slideshow to prove to us that there is issues. And I know Bob and his team, if I recall correct, there was a system in place that allowed us to capture these issues. And so that's the question and to see where it's at. And then in follow-up to that, we really would like to see more often data results to show what kind of issues exist. You know, we shouldn't have to wait for you to do a presentation for us to be exposed to those issues. So the first question, have we implemented the system and are we using it?
I can comment on that. First, I want to say I appreciate Ms. Martin, too. We work together and if we have to resolve some issues, we had something over the break with some teachers. We were able to get on it and resolve and I appreciate that as well from your end.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing these to our attention as well. And we're always looking to improve and do better. I'm going to ask Tom and Mark to come up. Here's we are with the flow is that we are working on a system like a flow is what we talked, the technology, so that we can look at the data, too. And I think you had even mentioned so that maybe we can track some of this. So I believe they're going to be ready to unveil that for the next school year. There's some work technology we're doing, but that is in the works and we are working on that. So if Mark and Tom want, if you guys want to. Just in general, you know, they're going to speak in general and kind of how they're handling some of those things and making sure that we're, we do address some of these issues.
Good evening, President Mosip, Dr. Maleko and members of the board. We all agree with Kathy that we are here for all, for the kids. As President Mosip said, our buildings are getting older. We have taken some steps. In the last year, we have hired an additional HVAC person because of all the issues we are having. Long-term, it's better for us to fix it ourselves and then contract it out to make sure it's done right and they're very familiar with the systems. But unfortunately, with the age of our systems, we could fix it today and tomorrow have the exact same problem or something very similar. Until we get to that large investment of infrastructure, we're going to continue to have these kind of issues. And unfortunately, I give a lot of credit to Mark and his team. They work very hard. A lot of what they do is behind the scenes that people don't see that they're addressing before it becomes an issue. And as things come up, we do have limited staff, so they are redressing it. Even after hours, even in this room itself, we had air conditioning issues and they were here late last night trying to fix them for this meeting. Did anyone complain about it? No, but we came across it and we're trying to fix it. So half the room has air conditioning. I won't tell you which half. But we are working on this and I'll let Mark go into a little more detail.
Yeah, thank you as well. Just to talk a little bit, that wasn't, hasn't been mentioned already. Some of the challenges we face, like this is the season where new roof leaks pop up. And it's pretty challenging for us right now because as you go from the winter freeze to the warmer climate, in order to address these properly, we need consistent outside temperatures of 40 degrees or warmer. So that's part of some of the delay and the challenge that we go through also with our multi-level buildings. And the age of our buildings, which we mentioned about, a lot of these leaks to be investigated require man lift. And, you know, that's one thing to coordinate, to get the investigation on. And that's another piece of coordinate to have the repairs completed. So, you know, just to wrap it up, we, as Mr. Wall mentioned, our team works very hard and diligently to try to get these repairs done in a timely manner. But due to the age of our building and sometimes the challenges we faced in investigating it and then the time it takes to get some of the parts for our heating and cooling systems, it does take us a little bit longer than we would like. But we're going to continue to work on trying to come up with better systems to try to improve what we've been having, experiencing.
And I think that flow chart is going to help us, too, because we renovated. And I think Kathy, this will help us kind of.
Mr. Eddie, he's here, if you'd like him to talk about a little bit.
I mean, I don't know if that we need to get into all the detail per se. But I do think it's going to collect the data on that. And then secondly, you know, Ms. Martin, if you need to, you can always, you know, come to me if there's something we need to get on and Mark's on top of things. And I think it is challenging for the staff, too, as we know, because we've had issues that have come up that are like electrical issues at different buildings and it's a lot of the aging infrastructure. There's other things, though, that we need to get on when we see it. And I think this tracking system will make sure so if there's issues happening that our staff is not doing versus things that we know are infrastructure. But we obviously have to resolve all of them. And, you know, when the decisions have come, and Mr. Wall keeps bringing it up, and I know we brought up building and site. We have to put the safety issues first, the heating, those kind of things. We have a lot of nice things that we should be replacing. You know, we talk about different things in the district that we would like to do, but we don't have the funding. So we have to, you know, put in for those needs like a boiler or, you know, air conditioning or things that are the big necessities is where we're at right now with infrastructure. But we all want to work together to make sure everything's safe. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, Kathy. And we'll work together with our engineers and other unions.
Great. Any other questions?
I do want to say something.
Sure.
I think, let's not, I've got to be careful. We shouldn't be dismissive of tracking issues. It allows us to justify and understand what the issues are and to, you're always going to prioritize, you know, based on funding, based on how critical it is. But we want to make sure there is a responsiveness and it doesn't go into a black hole. So it's really, really important that, you know, those type of systems are not complicated. Bobby knows it. So tracking even allows us to justify with the bond and issues. So it's really important to be responsive to the teachers on things that we could and justify why we can't. It might be the issue is funding and, you know, we explain. And I'm sure they'll understand. But it's something that we need to do. We need to be able to track things. Just, we're in a new world.
Well, I guess maybe I will let Bob then mention what you're doing.
Thanks. So what we're currently looking at for our system is very similar to what we use in technology for our help desk tickets. And so what you would be able to do is collect data by building, where you would be able to kind of see where it is. And like with the help desk ticketing system, it goes to our techs or to our network administrators. In this case, it would be able to go to our engineers, any of the support tickets like that. So they would be able to respond. So we would be able to look at that data of response time with the engineers. And we would also be able to have the staff input their concerns with their scene, with their building, with their room number, so we can track that data over time as well, too. We would allow staff to also open up the tickets if their ticket was closed and they don't feel it was done adequately. So it allows for two-way communication if a ticket gets closed prematurely as well, too. And that way we can track all that information.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Trustee Barry?
Yeah, I like where Trustee El Jazmi is going with this, but I'm surprised there hasn't been a system in place already. It's all about communication. I mean, I keep hearing these buildings are old. It's like, we know these buildings are old. That's not, that's, that just sounds like, what the public's hearing right now is an excuse. That needs to stop. I mean, ever since last Thursday I saw this, then today we got an email that eight things were taken care of. Let's get to it. And I agree with you. If there's a reason, if there's a part that's going to take six months to get here, let's let the administrative and employees know that, hey, we hear you, we see you. It's going to take some time to fix this. But some of this other stuff, it might not get to you because there is no system in place. And I'm sure if it does, you have a great staff. I know the, I know the work they put in. And did you say air conditioning today? A little too early for that, but yeah, so no more excuses. Let's just get to it. And if there's a reason that we can't get to it, let's let everybody know. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Barry. Thank you all and thank you, Ms. Martin.